All right, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for June 12. Start the pledge of allegiance, tie of allegiance, tee the flag.
From the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation on their God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Anybody want to do an invocation? No?
Wait a minute, Janine? Janine?
You already said she's not.
Okay, do we have any changes to the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Aye.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have the first quarter employee of the quarter today.
Employee group?
Well, it is employee group.
So this is a group, snow removal crew was nominated. We do have one individual that showed up to accept the award this evening, so we can guess go about with him. The other ones do the rest of the crew.
Could you list their names for us?
I got it.
Oh, you do.
I think that you should just keep it off, Sean, since you're the only one that came to get it.
First and first, we can negotiate.
Well, we thank Carter Bornitz, Lake Heron, Jeremy Hall, Gary Nelson, David Peterson, and Sean Turkelson. We appreciate the work and dedication that you do for our city. That's not the one. Where is it?
That's here.
Is that his?
Right here, want to get a picture?
Actually, they only get three minutes. Diane's pushing the clock already.
Picture time? Go.
Somebody's got to move up.
Oh, I see. Sneak up here.
Got to keep there. Okay, ready? One, two, three, one more. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Did you add Shane for that?
Sure.
No, we're not allowed. You're not allowed to be thanked?
No, but thank Shane.
I take it back.
Thank you, Shane.
Shane just cried, no points.
Thank you. Oh my, that was a winter.
So, is there somebody here from the public that would like to talk about something that is not on the agenda? You want to go up, Jim?
Okay, the workforce group is here tonight to request a meeting with the council in the near future. Can you hear me?
I can't hear you.
There you go. That's not going to make you hear better.
Can you hear me now? No.
It's not plugged in?
It is.
It is?
For the recording, but just not, not so you hear better, it's just for the recording.
Oh, I see.
So you just have to talk.
I have to talk about her. Okay.
And you're calling your kids for supper.
The workforce group is here tonight to request a meeting with the council again. We realize that the city budget is in dire straits, and we would like your help and advice in how to proceed forward with the community center, which is a city project. So I thought it would just be a good time to do it tonight. Well, pretty much everyone is here, and we maybe can select a date. And for us, Thursdays are good. I don't know about, I know you have lots of meetings too.
I work on Thursday evenings.
You work on Thursdays? I think we're going to just run into that no matter what, aren't we?
Can we, can we wait to do that until we've received, we just have, we're about to send out for the RSPP for the engineering consulting. I think that might be a good thing to discuss when we're in the process of that whole thing then too. I'm just throwing that out because that's going to be something to discuss.
We'd have some numbers to look at and talk about, think about going forward, how...
How soon would that be though?
Probably three weeks at least by the time you get it published.
Maybe you gotta give them time, how long are we going to give them to do it?
Right.
We gotta give them, you gotta give them probably a month to do it.
Say a month at least.
Is there, is there something that you think needs addressing sooner?
To put...
Well, you know, we have...
What is kind of, yeah, I mean, we just met a few weeks ago, and I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I know we did. I know we did. But, you know, if, if we're going to go ahead with programs and everything else, we need to talk about what types of programs you want, and plus, how much they're going to cost, if anything. You know, we're going to try to do programs that we can maybe get from extension, you know, the hospital. The things that'll probably end up costing are the programs for the kids, because I don't know if we'll be able, we might be able to get a few extension things in for the kids. You know what extension is?
Yeah. So these are programs after something is built that we're talking about?
Well, that's just it. But we, you've told us we should have programs in place, you know, so we're trying to work on programs. We're trying to do what we're supposed to do. I don't think we're going to get the building up, you know, if we can get it started next year, we'll be doing good. And so, if we can get it started, and then go into the programs perhaps, you know, we just wants, we want some advice and some help, is what we want.
And truly, by knowing what kind of activities or programs you want there, it would depend on how the building is laid out too, I think, for...
Somewhat, yes. I don't know as though, you know, we're just probably talking about a large room, bathrooms. It's going to be a pretty simple layout, I believe. Maybe a, you know, a draw curtain, or like they have at the Lutheran church, where you can separate, you know, if somebody wants a special meeting, you know, probably we're going to have to have media. That's going to be really important, because that's what everybody uses now for everything. So, I mean, some of those things we have to discuss. We would like to work on senior dining, so, I don't know. I, I thought too, maybe the, the RSP would be a good thing to wait for, but then I thought that might take a really long time. It might be two months. Are we just going to kind of sit in limbo until then?
Well, I don't think, I don't think we need to sit in limbo. I mean, the most important part that your group has been kind of given authority, responsibility, you know, and you've done an excellent job so far as continuing to do the fundraising, because nothing is going to happen until the fundraising is up to a point that's, you know, close to what it's going to cost to at least build.
We understand that.
The numbers that we set prior were kind of pulled out of the air at 8:50. I don't know whether that's an appropriate number or not, but we're still not even to that point yet.
Oh, that was...
And so, I think that's probably more important right now than the program.
And that was kind of pulled out of the air somewhat. So I, yeah, I...
Where are we now with fundraising? Where are everybody, or however you want to say it?
Seven hundred and five thousand.
Seven hundred and five?
Yeah. So we're not far away. I mean, it, it helps if the people know what we're going to do too, and that's why I thought maybe, you know, we could have some help and advice from you guys as to how to proceed forward, being we're having this budget crunch.
Well, I'd be willing to get together again. I think your point about Lutheran Social Services is a good one. I think that's one of the key components we're missing here, and I, we need to be making some efforts right now to, with Lutheran Social Services or some other entity, will, would they be willing to come in and provide that service again? But...
I, I agree with you again, Seth. The, I think the meal thing is something that the community is lacking right now.
That's something so important, yes.
Until we get some numbers, I don't know.
We did meet with Chris from this region for social services, or for senior linkage, and she was going to talk to Lutheran Social Services and see what the possibility would be to get them back in, in Tracy, so that we could have dining here once we get it built. But then again...
I guess I'm open for whatever. I would like to see some numbers come back before we had too many more meetings, but do you think we need that to get some...
I think it would be very helpful, that's for sure.
Yeah.
I, I understand that, but do you think we should be working on things before that?
Well, if it's going to take a year and a half, just guessing, time we get going and get done, year and a half, things could change so much in that time with the dining and everything, I think.
What is your experience, Shane, in getting those back?
I think a month would be legit, easily.
How do you see them?
I'd like to get, you know, a copy to the council just to review before I send it to the paper, you know, then we're talking next week before it can get published, and then you want at least two weeks for publication. It's generally the standard for an RFP, you know, so, you know, I'd say a month easily would be, I think, doable for us getting numbers back. And then, I don't know, I don't know how the council meetings land, but you'll probably want to review or the work group review the, the RFPs, you know, and once we get those in, so, you know, so we got, you know, say at least a month.
Sounds like six weeks to me.
Just depending on how meetings land, I guess. Next week, I have a calendar in front of me, but, I mean, just something to think about, I guess, as far as...
We don't want them to rush on it either. We're still in a number. Do some good homework and come with a good honest number. The thing is, though, once them come back, don't you have like 30 days to say, "Yeah, we'll do it," or "No, we won't?" And then, and if we're not ready to do that, then we're... You know, this bid's usually good for so many days, or...
Right.
So I don't know how to handle it.
Sixty days is common.
Okay.
I'd say July 10th would be the earliest meeting, you know, as far as the council to review anything. You know, so, you know, I guess whatever you want to do as far as a work group meeting, it's up to you. Then you have the grant out there.
That's the thing, we have those darn grants out there.
So you're going to want to use that up too.
Yep. Well, as soon as we get the, that RFP or whatever, as soon as we get that back, then we'll know if we can use, we can use some of that grant money for that, right?
Yeah.
Yep. That's what it's for.
Yeah.
That's what it's for.
And I think that's the question is, because I think the last one's came through in excess of that one.
I think the lower court was in the mid eighties, eight thousand.
Those are...
It's been a while, but...
So they had some extra meetings planned in there too, I think.
Yeah, see, a lot of it was public engagement too, and you guys removed that section off there, so, you know, so whatever the balance is, I don't know that it was broken down, but, you know, it's been another year and a half's gone by too, so I don't know what...
Everything's went down, hasn't it?
Right. So I think that's the next question, is when that comes back, then we've got 15, how much extra do we have towards that? I think that's a good time to get back together again after we've had a chance to see it. My thought. I mean, I don't want to be together, but I, I think when we met this winter, I mean, we had a, we had a huge list of programs and potential programs.
Well, we did.
So I think that was a wonderful start. I don't know that we didn't even accomplish everything that she had put together at that time, so...
That was just something we could select from, you know, we don't, we wouldn't, no, we would never fit all those programs in.
So I guess that's my question is just, I guess I would prefer just to wait until we got that, because I don't know.
The RFP back?
Yeah.
So, are you okay with that? We'll just keep plugging away then, I guess.
Really not plugging, you're doing an excellent job.
No, you're doing a great job.
You're doing an excellent job. I don't call that plugging, but...
Well, it is kind of, but, um, thank you, and I'll wait to hear from you then, Shane, and then, then we'll bring it to a meeting and try to settle on a date.
Yeah, I'm assuming you guys want to see it in the council meeting first, and then bring it to the work group.
Yeah, well, and we'll, when we know it's on the agenda, we'll let the work group know that it's on the agenda, if it's the 10th or whatever, and then that'll be a good time to, within this group already, kind of to talk about it on the record and whatever.
My question is, is Mr. Council going to see that, or can the work group see that RFP too?
I mean, it'll be in the packet, so...
Okay.
I mean, it'll be open to the public.
Yeah.
So they get a chance to peek at it.
And you are making sure that Jeff Nelson gets one of those from Sioux Falls Architect?
Yeah, I have, I mean, on the way of the list of, I don't know, it's like 14 to 16 other firms, and then we'll publish in the paper too, so...
Okay.
So basically, whoever submitted the RFP initially, we're going to send out a, the new RFP to them, so they can review it and resubmit, so...
So that'd be, be good to make sure that he got that, being some of the work has already been done, and see what that might mean.
Mm-hmm. We'll put that up.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Okay.
Anybody else from the public like to talk about something that is not on the agenda? I don't think, Ruth, do you want to come up here?
I didn't, Ruth Sanders, I work, I'm on the working part of the committee. I didn't intend to say anything, but I have, and this is my feeling, when we have meetings, you sit there and we sit here. Our next meeting, I would like us to break into small groups and kind of talk to each other, and maybe do some barnstorming ideas. That's from the teacher's side of me, but sometimes that works a lot better than sitting in a big round table, you know, and not, not that we're going to get a lot accomplished, but maybe just some communication with each other. That's my feeling. That's not, I said, I mentioned it at our last meeting, but that's my feeling about why I'd like to see us get together again.
Thanks.
What's the news on the parks? Last time you guys were going to talk about taking Greentown off?
It's on the resolution tonight, 2023-47. So we'll be discussing that just a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, it is on there.
Well, thanks a lot.
Yeah.
I'll be back. No, wait, go ahead.
Thanks, Barb.
All right, anybody else? Okay, Dave, you want to do your thing?
I'll make a motion to approve the May 22 council minutes, approve municipal accounts payable and payroll without breakthrough beverage, approve resolution 2023-46 to approve the gambling permit for St. Mary's as long as fees are paid. Motion to approve resolution 2023-48, approve the off sale liquor license for Casey's as long as fees are paid, and approve the Tracy fire relief minutes from March 6.
I'll second.
At first and second, any further discussion?
I've got one question on the bills payable. A and T Europe spa for $90,000, a little over $90,000, that's for the materials for the pool liner?
Half the material.
Half the materials.
Yep. Now, it's a big number.
Well, the stoppings makes it sound like it's really fun, but...
Yeah.
And with Casey's liquor license that has to do with what, would they be able, would they be able to sell wines also, or just the beer?
Yeah, what is the stipulation? Is 3-2?
3-2. Isn't that still their license?
If I remember correctly. I don't think that's ever changed.
It's just their 3-2 off sale, is all it is.
Do they have it there? Must be in a corner, I don't go down, man.
Way in the back.
Back corner.
Okay.
I saw it here.
Expand your horizons.
Oh, we got such a beer, nice beer cave, why do you want to go to Casey's?
Yeah, there you go. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Arvisu.
Yes.
Shit.
Yes.
Dobson.
Aye.
Sean.
Wendy.
Aye.
Mayor Carmen.
Aye. Should you have did that the last? David, should you have done that on the last one?
Yeah, because we haven't done the breakthrough one yet.
Now we gotta do the break, now we gotta do the breakthrough thing.
Okay, someone do the breakthrough one.
I'll do that.
Okay, but you want to second that?
I'll second that.
I'll do that.
Any further discussion?
Diane knows what to write, so I wasn't too worried.
Okay, roll call, please.
Wendy.
Aye.
Dobson.
Aye.
Shit.
Yes.
Arvisu.
Yes.
Mayor Carmen.
Aye. For mayor council communication, we have the legion. David, you want to come up and tell us all about it?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, city council, thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk to you today. I'm Dave Dieter, and commander of the Tracy American Legion. I handed out some, a little packet with some photos in it. For about the last six months or so at our meetings, we've been having some discussion about an idea we had about putting a memorial out in the courtyard right over here. Right now, there's a flagpole and that tree, that pine tree that's been out there for a while, and we thought it would be nice to put a memorial somewhere in that courtyard, maybe by the flagpole, and incorporate that as part of it, since it's already there, you know, have that kind of as the centerpiece, and then have a memorial. I just found some ideas. That first one, actually, on the top is, is the one that we did out at the Wheels Museum here several years ago. I'm not sure when that was done, but 20 or so years ago, maybe. I don't want to duplicate that, but I, I really like that, and I want to have maybe something similar to that. Some of these other ones are just some things that I came across on the internet, just to kind of give you a, a little bit of, you know, what we're thinking might be a good idea. We also talked about putting a statue out there, and I'm not sure if that's a good idea, because if you put one statue of a army or navy, air force, then you got to have them all, so you end up with five or six statues out there. When we, we talked about that, I did some checking around, you know, we have the statues at the fire hall and the one at the ambulance garage, and, which are very nice, and they were donated by a, a local individual, but they are actually concrete. They look like they're bronze, but they're not. They look pretty realistic, and that's by far the most cost-effective way to go if we were to do statues, but you're going to be at about $4,500 bucks a pop, and they come out of Kellogg, Minnesota, which is over, over by Rochester. So we'd have to have somebody haul them here from there, or pay somebody flatbed or whatever. So there's, and, and this guy over there, like I said, he did the ones, these two that are in town, plus there's a dog by the, the fire department, and another individual donated that one. And that's kind of where we're at, and right now, we're just in the thought process. We're not going to go anywhere until we get the approval of the city council and the mayor, and if you're all on board, say, "Hey, this is a great idea, I think we can make it work," then we'll, we'll move on with it. If you think it's not a good idea, maybe there's some plans for something else with that area out there down the road that I don't know about, and if that's the case, you know, we don't have to do it.
So Dave, are you simply asking for that spot of land type of thing?
Yes.
That's the main request you're here for?
That's what I'm here for today, is, is just to get, get the city council to be on board with it. I'm pretty sure once, you know, if you do, once we get going, I think the city will support it. The businesses, the citizens, you know, because we're going to need to raise money. You know, we don't have the money for it. We're not a big fundraising organization, and, you know, they used to be when they had the poll tabs years ago, you know, they had plenty of money, but we don't have that anymore, so, you know, we do pancake feed in the wintertime and a couple other little things, and that's about it. We, we raise just enough money to keep that building open that we have across the street over there, you know, pay the taxes and the utilities and such, but, so...
I, I do have a question, but more for Shane. So Shane, the location he's talking about, by the flagpole, is that where you're going to have to be doing some digging for sewer work?
No.
No?
No, that'll be to the west. Is there anything that comes through there at all that we'd need to be concerned with? I can look at the plan, but I don't think, I think all the water sewer comes out the front on this side and out the front over on the PMC side, so, I think, it could be all right.
I just thought I'd ask, since we've been dealing with that issue.
At one time, I heard some rumblings at the school one to do a bigger, whatever, 4A, whatever, yeah, whatever you call that, and I don't know where they're at at, if they're candid or keep going on it, because if we stick this there, then that would squash that.
Well, I think what Dave's looking for is just kind of a general, are we, would we support it, and then the details to be worked out.
We could coordinate that.
As we kind of know the supports there to say, "Yeah, we're, we're in favor of something."
Because I had heard that too, that, that there was potential, maybe like a, you know, add a little bit on, have a concession stand, an entryway for, there's a lot of tournaments, as you guys know, tournaments and different things going on here, so it'd be nice to have a, a better entryway, and if that's the case, that's fine. We can coordinate with whatever's going to be going on and find a way to work it all in, so nothing interferes with the other. This isn't something I want to do right away. This is, hopefully, next summer, we can make this happen, but...
There's a lot of room up there too.
There's a fair amount of room, and, you know...
A little farther closer to the stream.
If the tree's going to stick around, then, you know, we can work around that. If the tree needs to go away, we can...
I do know, I think that the tree was planted in memory of Bill Fisher. I know, so I don't know... so I don't know how that plays out in the...
Right, and I understand that, and I, I'm, I'm not here to say the tree needs to go, absolutely not saying that. We can work around the tree if, if that's going to stay and that's, that's fine.
I think it's, it's nice that you're trying to get something like this going. I think that's great.
I think it's a great idea.
I think without going to too much expense, maybe figure out what you guys would like to do and maybe do just a, even just a hand drying of like the space, you know, is it going to be 15 feet deep and we're going to do this and this, you know, just...
Exactly, and, and that's, I was going to try to do all that, but I thought, well, if they say no, then I waste an effort, so. I'll come here if you guys say, let's do it, you know, I'm not going to proceed with anything without you guys knowing about, obviously you need to know what's going on, so. Find a professional that, that knows what's going on. This isn't my, my expertise by any means, I, I'm not real creative, so I gotta allow, rely on somebody else to, to help me out with that, but I think we could put something together in the space that's provided that would look nice, and if it's not going to look nice, I'm not going to do it. It's, it's either got to be really nice or I'm not interested, so...
Well, I think it's a great idea, I mean, it's, it is the VMC.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
It's for veterans, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's a fitting place to have it right there.
We got a, the little memorial with the, the garden club over there, by the way, that's beautiful over there, they really take care of that and it looks really, really nice, but I think something, you know, specific to veterans is what this community needs. And we got the one out the wheels, is there another one in town? That's, I think that's probably it, isn't it? How many towns do you go to that don't have a, a veterans memorial out of city park or whatever?
That's true.
I think it's important that we have that for our community and for our veterans. There's a lot of veterans in this community, a lot of them you don't know.
I'd be supportive of the idea as well, and I'd just like to throw one other idea There might be a possibility, or I personally would like the idea of some kind of a piece of statuary art there, it wouldn't necessarily have to be a soldier, it could be something representing, representing something else.
Okay.
And there are grants, I'm thinking back to what, in the 1980s, when we established a permanent tornado tree memorial that at that time marked the 20th anniversary of the, of the tornado. And at that time, a committee worked with the Southwest Minnesota Arts and Humanities Council, and we actually solicited proposals from artists for what they thought. One I remember was kind of a ribbon of stainless steel, it was kind of a corkscrew. The design that was picked was the actual tornado tree replica, but there were some interesting ideas that were presented and developed by some artistic people, and that might be an avenue to at least look into, and there is some grant funding from a legacy grant to help pay for something like that.
I, I agree, you know, getting outside influence from somebody that maybe has experience with that, that's artistic and creative and all that. And I know there's grants, and I, I think the, you know, the veterans, the Minnesota Legion does not offer anything because everybody wants some, you know, so they just don't do it. But there are other government agencies that will, you know, you can apply for grants and, you know, and that's all things we'll look into, but, you know, again, it's just, if everybody's on board, then I'll, I'll proceed.
I'm in favor. I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Me too.
All right, go for it.
Cool, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll do some work when I can, I'm pretty busy, but as I, as I get to different milestones, I'll keep you guys up to date on where we're at and what's going on, and we can go from there. Awesome, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Shane, you want to take the next one?
No, really. No, discussion regarding posting to fill City Administrator position. I guess Pam, you or Tom may have found, I think Val put this together, the, the presentation or kind of the advertisement for the city, more or less. There's some stuff that needs to be added to that as far as core duties and attributes and, I don't know, if you want to have, I guess moving forward, I don't know, if you want to have like a workshop meeting on putting something together with the council on this or... I think that's where, I think we had kind of discussed whether or not to form a kind of a working group. Val has done this much to kind of provide, this is, I guess, a little bit of background, these days, a lot of the search firms post this particular type of a publication or it's almost looks like kind of a website or a web program that gives the city's best foot forward, yeah, trying to find what they call it. Position profiles is what they call them, and they're kind of a, a recruitment profile to give prospective individuals an idea of what our city has to offer to hopefully entice, you know, applicants to respond and, and see, and, and so she started that, she's looking for some additional input, she's kind of brought thus far how much she has done, but do we, I guess as it relates to the bigger picture of getting this together, posting this out there, do we want to do that as a full group of a council, do we want to set a, a working group?
I think you'd be more efficient with a working group that could bring their idea back to the council, because I, you know, I, I want a really nice, make us look good, but we also have some time urgency here, don't you think with them?
That's why I think if we do a work group, I think we're going to have, whoever's, we all pick to be on that work group, we're going to have to like, not like we can't like send an email and show it to them, but we're going to have to pretty much trust them because we have to wait to come back again two weeks later.
That's like too much time.
Way too much time.
I agree.
There was a real good kind of guide on the League of Minnesota Cities, I think I sent everybody a link to it, but Hiring as a Manager or Administrator Toolkit, and it's pretty good. I'll send it out again to everybody to take a look at it.
Yeah, Tom, I didn't see that.
The good step-by-step of kind of what we want to do, where we can post some of the choices that need to be made in advance, but... I can send that out too if you, if some of you didn't get it.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing that.
It's right on the League's website, but that's, that's kind of what we followed last time. I know the, last time it took a long time too, because we actually went through the first round of applicants and decided not to hire any of them, reopened it. So, you know, that, that takes a lot of time, so, you know, I don't know how, you know, that was however many years ago, three and a half years ago, so, I mean, things might be different now, you might find one right away too, so, you know, whatever you want to do as far as organizing that. I guess I would be in favor of, of a work group of not to exceed three council members, obviously, and, you know, having Val to be a part of that since she's kind of begun, I think Diane to be a part of it and Shane and whoever else would need to be kind of involved with that. Jeff?
I think that's a good idea.
I agree. Three-member group would work well.
I'd be willing to serve on that group if that's what the...
We need volunteers, who else?
I will too. Nobody else wants to.
What do you mean, nobody else?
I think there should be one person who was involved in the hiring process last time, and I think Jerry would be a...
You're looking at him.
Well, Jerry too.
Jerry was here last, yeah. Jerry was here last time too.
I heard her say that you two were...
But I did see Dave raise his hand over there, he raised his hand. I'll let Jerry, she's not here, she gets volunteered.
Well, and she's also, her position at the hospital deals with a lot of HR, I, I think she would be a good fit for that committee.
I can reach out to her.
Um, Mayor and Jerry.
So as far as the functions of this committee, is it obviously putting the ad out, you know, selling the city, but is it also viewing the applicants, or was that something the council would want to get directly after?
Once they send her in there. Well, like last time, we had a forum that we went through.
What thing?
And we all went through them separately.
Initially, what the League kind of says is to have an individual who is, I think, if our community and our staff is large enough not to have any one of the council necessarily to be the point person. So as to give any undue, you know, favoritism or anything like that, or overcommit or whatever, it, it establishes either, you know, an acting administrator or the city clerk or someone to be the, the person that kind of is the point person for making sure that the ads are out there when the applications come in, sorting through those, making sure they're complete, and, and then after we've got those, distributing them to all of us. Can you do that again?
Well, then they can't be distributed to us, they have to stay here, they can't be public knowledge.
You can, yeah, you guys can view them until they get, you know, the three finalists narrowed down, it's not public as far as...
We have to come here to look at the applications. Last time when, last time we did it, we waited until there were four or five or six, and then...
Graded them.
Shane, Shane let us know, and then we all came in at separate times, went through them, gave our, put our grading papers back in, and then we went from there.
As long as from what I'm reading, as long as we don't identify a name, they can be applicant two, applicant three, applicant four, so we're looking at them completely objectively, we can do that.
Why, why can't we look at the name?
You can.
Yeah, I was going to say...
It becomes public then at that point in time though.
No, you, you can...
Yeah, you can close a meeting for that.
The closed meeting again.
If we come in here like Dave said, one, one at a time or two at a time, and then go through it, turn it back in, while we're looking through those applications, we should be able to see the name, not just...
You can, as long as you don't do it in an open meeting.
Yes.
It becomes public when we select finalists.
Yes.
Yeah, I get that.
And then that discussion would all have to be done in an open meeting from that one?
Yep.
Hear that pair, open meeting.
We, do we need to have some kind of resolution to that effect or a motion to that effect, Shane, or what do we got to do to just make this so? I think everything would have to have a resolution, but...
Well, let's worry about getting the, the committee put together, reviewing it, getting it all set up so we can actually send out, so we can...
That's what my concern was, do we need that as a resolution, or can we just as a council appoint?
We can just appoint that and go, and then they need to get together within the next couple days or to try to get the thing out next week even maybe.
Should I make a motion to the effect that we're appointing the three individuals? I would move that we appoint our mayor, Pam Corman, Tom Dobson, and Jerry Shones to a committee that will organize the advertisement and specifications for the job, and as part of that working group, we would ask Shane and Val and who else did you name? Jeff Carpenter to, to be present when they meet. Is that a fair motion?
So Jen, are you saying the, well, I'll second that so we can discuss it. Do you, do you feel like that's a requirement for the three staff members to be present when the three council committee members get together?
Not necessarily, I maybe should have worded it in a way that they can assist the committee with questions, and maybe they have.
At the direction of the council committee.
Mm-hmm, that sounds good. So I will, do I have to undo my motion or just amend it? Whatever.
Let Diane make sense.
Be creative.
Well, she is.
Okay, but, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to, to Angela.
Couple staff reports here. Boggs is first on the list here, so Angela, do you want to come up and give the council, she's going to give the council an update on airport hangars and project updates at the, at the, at, at the airport, so...
Actually have some packets for you that I put together.
Have, what she's doing this, have any of you council people talked to anybody about the four, is the public come to you about the four or eight hangars?
I got a couple comments.
One was, four was too much, and the other was, do eight as long as you're doing it. So I don't know what that all means, but, you know, since we don't have any money, they thought, why spend any money at their airport, but then this other citizen's not a flying person, but an older person that said, we need to do that to keep the airport here and thriving, so, I've been reached out by two people, I guess, one on each side of the fence.
Okay, well, I'm Angela, it's been quite a while since I've had the opportunity to talk to you, and really glad to have the chance to give you an in-person update and what's happening at the airport. Tracy Airport's been one of the busier airports that we've been working with because you just have had so many good things going. The cover page of the packet I just handed to you starts with the master plan, as you remember, we started that a long time ago, and we turned it into FAA almost two years ago, and they just finally got back to us with comments. So we are now integrating them into the documents that we've been working on for that period. The good things are that there's no, no expense, the city doesn't owe anything more on this, it's done as far as you're concerned, and it's not holding you back from doing any projects you want to do, so all is well with FAA on that. There were two projects that were done last summer, the summer before, I guess it was last summer, would be the AWAS relocation and the runway rehab. The AWAS project is complete, as you know, it's functional, it's running. I think we have not gotten all of the money from Mindot for you yet, I think there's one more credit application that maybe didn't get turned in, so I'll work with Shane to make sure that it does get turned in, so that you can get all the money that you're owed, and then that will be done. The runway rehab, that one we believe is completely paid up, so we think we're good on that one, there's not much else to say. That's your Band-Aid project to the bigger project later where you need to do a reconstruct, but it buys you some time.
When is that expected to come down the line then?
Actually, I'll talk about that right in just a couple minutes, that's okay. I'm trying to do the simple things first, actually. So Boggs was made aware that there is a potential for some sale of some property off the airport to the cemetery so that they can expand it, and FAA, I've talked with them a little bit about it, they don't actually have any interest in the land in the terms of they don't have any strings on it, like they do on land that they've helped pay for, and neither does Mindot, so that's really good, that gives you guys the opportunity to make a sale if you wish. That gives you guys the opportunity to make a sale, if you wish. And the second page of your packet shows you a little drawing that will show you the edge of the cemetery, plus a one-acre slice, which we think is about all they need, but I haven't, I don't know that for sure, how much they need. Once it's decided what they need, and if the city indeed wants to make a sale like that, I will work with FAA to, you know, work out any details that they want covered. We may need to have an navigation easement there, which all that would do is allow you to cut trees if they get too tall. They're not gonna get too tall. It's too far away from the runway, it doesn't matter, but FAA still wants to see that on the property sale. Other than that, it's quite simple.
Well, Angela, that, that cemetery then is a long ways away from any of the crossing grass runways.
Oh, yeah. It's in the drawing, you know, it's on the, it's between the turf runway and the cemetery, but it's not going to get close enough to it to be an issue.
Okay.
Let's, let's drop mine out there.
Yeah, that's a consideration, too. But we're here to help if you, you know, need, if you guys decide this is something that you wanna do, we'll work with FAA to work out the details. So you just let us know. Okay? So the next thing, which is probably what's on your mind, is the hanger, the hanger loan. I know Eric's been walking you through the hanger loan and the grants that come with it. This is a kind of a complex project, because you have three funding sources that are all coming together to make this happen for you. One is the loan, which you guys have accepted, or, or said you wanna accept with MINDOT. It's called the Hanger Revolving Loan Fund. And in addition to that, you have the opportunity to use BIL money from the federal government, which is the bipartisan infrastructure law money. Your timing is really good, because here in the state, they just signed into law a 5% match on that money, which means, it used to be that you would expect to pay 10% of a project, where you use 90% of that federal money. Now the state's gonna kick in 5%. So you have 5% more you can keep, or spend another way. So, that was a new thing that just got signed into law, and we're pretty happy, because it makes, for a lot of little cities, that's the difference maker, you know? That 5% can really knock the price down for a local share. So, the third funding stream for that is the, a MINDOT state grant, which you've had plenty of those before. And that would be for the slab of the building and the taxi lanes that go around. So, yeah, if you look ahead in your packet, you can see this drawing with the blue and red images on it. There's a lot of layers, so it's a little difficult to read, but the light red rectangle you see off on the left-hand corner is your current hanger, T-hanger that's there. What's shown in blue would be the area that you would be building your new hanger. And I had heard that four units was what you wanna do, and that's fine. That's what we will work with the state and FAA on. This drawing is not quite right, because it shows taxi lane coming down too far. You don't have to build that now. You can save your money and build it when you need it. So, that's not true.
With this money, where this, you said the state was kicking in 5%? Is that towards the hangars, then?
It'd be toward the hanger, yep.
So that would, if, say we did change our mind, did the eight?
Sure.
That would kinda help us there, too, wouldn't it?
Yep, yep, you can use it. You can use that BIL money for four units, six units, eight units, whatever you choose. The thing to remember is that that money is getting doled out $110,000 at a time. So if you wanna spend a bunch of it upfront, you, you've gotta front the money a little bit, right? And then FAA pays you back $110,000 every year.
Oh, just every year?
Mm-hmm. Now, the first year you got $110,000, for 2022, 2023, you're getting $113,000, and that's because it's gonna change a little bit each year, because of, as airports come and go out of the state system, as they change their statuses from an intermediate airport to a key airport, or whatever, it can affect the math. It just affects the formulation. So right now, you have $223,000 that you can apply to this, right now. And then the next year, you'll get another 110, maybe it'll be 113 again. We don't know that for sure, but it'll be close.
Timing, are, are we looking at next year, as far as construction, anyway?
Well, let's see. So, that's a good question. It sorta depends on how quickly we move pieces and parts, right now. We need to get a design grant in. I would say we're probably gonna get the design done first, and then summer 2025 would probably be the construction, or 2024, excuse me, 24.
Eric had this kinda laid out for us, if we did this, or if we did this, it's gonna cost the city this much money each year for the next 30 years, or whatever.
Yeah.
Can you help us with that, since he's not here anymore?
I'm afraid not. I'm sorry. That's not my, that's not my skill set, is it?
Tyler and I would have to come up with, with that.
Cause that, knowing the state is gonna kick in a little more money, that might change my opinion on...
Well, his numbers included the state.
Oh, it did, already?
Including that 5%.
Yep, that was all figured in with these grants.
I did not know that. Okay.
Yeah, so all three of those funding sources come together. If you wanna see how it breaks out, that's this page right here.
Yeah, I see that page.
So, the top table is for just the engineering and the bidding part. It's sort of like the thing we do first. First, we gotta get the, the Caddix was your environmental document, and the hanger design done. And then in a separate task order, you would have the grading taxi lane and the building slab. So that would be the first year. All of that, you can see we've got broken out. In green is the BIL money, and that's not even current anymore, because now it's 5% to you guys, not 10%. So you can cut those numbers in half, because the state's gonna pay 5% out. The stuff in blue, the blue column, is what the state will pay for your, the design of your grading taxi lane and building slab in this first year. And then you don't actually take out the hanger loan yet. You don't need it yet. So it's really just design right now.
Sorry to interrupt you. So, the 5% that they just signed into a bill that Eric had in his, in his numbers?
Well, that wouldn't have been, cause this is super new. This is like two weeks ago.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, too.
Or a week ago.
It's likely the 10% that he had in his budget.
10%.
Now, and the numbers that he was working with didn't reflect a current cost estimate either. So these are a little bit higher than what he said, because of the climate, you know?
I think it looks like about...
It's not a lot different?
Not quite 200,000 different?
Over the, yeah, yep. It was 999 before. Then again, now, as you, you know, you basically, you're gonna be cutting, uh, in the green, you see the local BIL grant share totals at 17,8 plus 43. It's around 50. Well, now that total will be $25,000, so that takes your local total down quite a bit.
What, like, what would be an amount that we could just say, this is how much it is gonna cost us to do four?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part.
How much would, kinda just taking all of these numbers and digesting them into just one, how much is it going to cost us to do four hangars at this juncture?
Just your local share?
Yes.
So, I would say your local share would be $30,000 in the green column, maybe add them as we go, plus the $96,000 in the blue column. And then you need to have the 20% loan, which is $36,578. So that is your actual local cost, those three columns, about 30, 96, and 36,578.
Is that with, is that now, in 2023, or at what point in time do we need to start putting some money towards this to move forward, or is it next year?
Well, so, what we'll need to do in order to get you these grants is we need to do a couple steps. I've got them outlined here, and we'll talk about them. But there'll be a couple of task orders that you'll start with us for design, and that doesn't come all at once, it kinda dribbles in, you know, as things go on. But the real expenditure of money locally is gonna be, not this year, but next year, when we start, you know, things go out to bid, and then you can start moving dirt.
So, knowing, knowing that the state is kicking in a little more funds, you still think we need to stick with the four?
I do. I think we're got, I think we need to find that, the paperwork that Eric had put together that showed the four, six, and eight, and I need to bring that back up again to see, cause there was, there was something that made a huge difference. I don't know if it was our portion of payment, substantially more, or where it kinda broke out. A couple of the grants were, maybe you can help us with that part? A couple of the grants were, were for just having either four, six, or eight. They weren't, like, they didn't increase with each of those, it was just a flat amount.
Oh.
Like 200,000. You weren't gonna get 300 to do six, and 400 to do eight. It was 200, and anything above and beyond that for six and eight was out of our pocket.
The BIL money would be capped at that, what, 550?
About $550,000 is all you have in BIL money. You get to spend every penny of it against this building. The beauty of that money is that you get to spend this money on a revenue generating facility, even though you don't have your safety issues fixed yet, which is a thing that with regular FA money, they won't let you do. They'll say, you fix your safety things, then you can build hangars. But the BIL money doesn't have that, and that's why our local ADO is encouraging everybody to do things that they can't normally fund, like build hangars. So, what I can do to make your lives easier is I can provide you, if you're considering going to a larger one, I can provide you updated tables for four, six, and eight, and I'll also break it out with the 5% state and the 5% locals, so you can really see. I can have that to you within a day or two.
If the maximum we're giving is 550, that'd be a big bite for the city then to do it.
And that's, that's true, because the construction, hanger construction cost is pretty significant in, you know, that 550, if you look on the green column, we're spending all of it, just on a four unit, it's gone. So every, if you go up more, that ends up being more hanger loan, if you build a larger hanger.
And I think that's when we were looking at it, and then, I think we actually said to it at our planning meeting, or whatever, is to get back on that list of the revolving loan again, you know, for, but I mean, even if it's five years down the line, perhaps we'll be ready five years down the line to build the other four, or six, or eight, or whatever at that time.
I think for now, we're gonna have to stay at four.
You teased me with that 5%.
I'm sorry. It doesn't end up being, I mean, it only ends up being like, you know, $30,000, so it doesn't really get you a lot of hanger. It really doesn't. But it will help take care of some of the cost inflation from when we first estimated it way back when. So it's helpful.
And we gotta make sure we can fill them, too, to make that cash flow, too.
Cause the rent is supposed to be paying our share of the loan?
And it's still subsidized, even with the four, four unit?
Yep.
Eight unit subsidize a lot more, so...
Great.
It's back out here on the April 24th.
Is it?
Yeah. The MINDOT loan goes from 108 to 288.
Ouch.
Do you have some assistance to us, or for us, on what we could charge on the hangars, when they're doing like that?
I could provide you with the rates that are being charged all around the state right now. I do have that. It was provided by MINDOT, and I can get it to you, so you can see what's being charged. You know, what you could do is, you know, if you, you could still rent out all eight, if eight people wanna be in the old hanger, at the rate they're at, and then just charge a little bit more premium for the, the new hangars with the nice concrete floors, or whatever, or however you guys decide is right to distribute the cost, but I'm thinking that you probably have some opportunities. Some people want to have an improved hanger, and they might pay just a little bit more to get it. So...
I know Eric figured everything out, 150 a month, so, hanger at Hughes or Budgie, which is pretty average for the area, for a hanger, a new hanger.
I'll get you those rates, just for your, I'll get them to Shane.
Do you need something from us tonight, as far as, I mean, we've already kinda given the go-ahead on the four, right?
I, I do need a little bit. There's, we're well down the path of getting this money together for you. On the bottom of page one, there's a, a bunch of things that we've already got approved and done with MINDOT and FAA. But, this top of the second page is sort of the next steps, and there's several, but we'll do most of them for you. We just need the council's input on a couple of things. The first thing that needs to happen is we need to get an independent fee estimate, which is required by FAA. Whenever we have a, an engineering fee above a certain amount, they're like, well, you have to get another quote, basically, and they have a specific way they want it done. And I can work with Shane, so that the city can send out that and get a comparable quote, and then that's just, gets filed with a grant, too. That would go in the BIL grant. And then we would, after that, come back to you with a task order for the hanger design and the environmental part, and then a separate task order for the building slab, cause there are gonna be two different grants. So it just simplifies it if we do in two, two task orders. After that, the rest of it is us putting grants together, creating documents, getting them submitted, coordinating with FAA and MINDOT, a lot of coordinating. And then, once it's all in, that's their turn to process and approve those grants for you. So...
These are basically steel sheds?
Yeah, they're usually steel, mm-hmm. Pre-engineered steel is the better way, rather than a post-frame. They don't quite last as long as a pre-engineered steel. It would probably be something like an erected tube type, where they have a, a bi-fold door that raises up, so...
Now, are these, you mentioned you're gonna be applying for grants. So, I mean, is there a chance that we would, that some of the projections that we're dealing with would not come about, or are these pretty...
Like, you wouldn't get the grants?
Yes.
No, I don't think that would happen. They've all, MINDOT has offered the grant for the site, and FAA wants us to do the BIL one, and the hanger loan, you've come to the top of the list, so you're good. It's, they're not gonna reject anything. It's just a matter of getting the paperwork together and getting it in. And that IFE is the first thing, and that's the thing that I would like permission to go work with Shane on, to get done.
I will move that we should move forward with that.
Second that.
Any further discussion? Rocha? Schmidt?
Yes.
Aviason?
Yes.
Teeks?
Aye.
Landay?
Aye.
Dobson?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, with that established, we will go forward and get that done, and then we'll come back with two task orders like we discussed. And then we'll come back with two task orders like we discussed. And after that, it's just us putting documents together for you.
Can you find any extra money out there for it?
If I find it, you'll be first to know.
Thank you.
Because this is a great project. So there's only one other thing I wanted to bring to your attention. Doesn't require discussion tonight if you don't feel like it or don't have time. I did attach this eleven-by-seventeen sheet, which is your current CIP, and just to make sure that you know what's on it.
I saw that.
Yeah.
Walk us through.
Sure, okay. So the things that you see highlighted in green are the things we're talking about right now. Those are the grants and the loans and everything we're talking about now. And actually, I do have that one split out to show the BIL funding is five percent, five percent. So this is more current. The other things that are on here are things that need to get done. They've been kind of spaced out based on the timing of the need, you know, when FAA can fund things. We obviously have some, like airport zoning is a thing that needs to get updated after you do an ALP. But we keep pushing it back because the ALP wasn't done yet, you know, FAA hadn't approved it. There's a, in federal fiscal year twenty-five, there's a chip reader upgrade to your fuel system. Reason for that is that people are hacking into those things, and the city will be liable if someone, you know, steals a bunch of fuel, you're out of luck. But with a chip reader, you have that built-in safety and the state's suggesting strongly that everybody get it done. They tell us to budget thirty thousand dollars for that.
Where is that at? Is that twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five?
It's federal, federal twenty-twenty-four on the bottom of that grouping. Yeah. So the other big project that you have, which is kind of the, the big one that we started to talk about, is reconstructing your runway. And that task has been spread out as much as we could over multiple years to just make the local share as small as we can make it over time. You'll see in federal fiscal year twenty-four, there's a runway twenty-nine extension justification and environmental assessment report. That's a big report, but FAA requires you do it first before you do anything else. And then in federal twenty-six, we have a, some land purchase planned, to buy the land to extend the runway off to the southeast. So the problem, of course, you have multiple problems with your runway. One is it's, it's in tough shape. One is that the north end is too close to the county road, and it needs to shift. And then you have the big ravine at the end, which is too close to the end of the runway. So FAA says, this is really important, we want to fund all of it, we want to get it all done and leave you with a good runway that you don't have to change again. So they want to be able to fix the north end of the runway and the south end of the runway and rebuild it all in one project. And it's done. And that's what you see kind of dribbled through in federal twenty-four with the justification, federal twenty-six with the land acquisition, and then in federal twenty-seven, it's a bunch of design work. And then in federal twenty-eight, it's the construction work.
And when you say FAA wants to do this, they want to write a check for it?
Well, I mean, they'll write a check for ninety percent, and the state will write a check for five percent.
Is that an ongoing thing, or is that just, that five percent, is that just a one, like a one-year thing, or is that just an ongoing?
That's their normal funding rate. Yep. So FAA, for any project that they fund, will fund ninety percent for you guys. And then the state has a companion grant of five percent.
That's a seven-fifty a year.
Yep, it comes out of that. Now, these projects, like reconstructing your runway, is way more than you can save up a hundred fifty thousand at a time to do. These are million-dollar, many-million-dollar projects. So FAA has discrimin, I lost the word. They have the choice, they have some money they can choose what to do with.
Discretionary.
Discretionary, that was the word. Discretionary funding that they can apply to, they want to apply it to your project because they're that jazzed about it getting fixed, so.
So you're saying that it probably, possibly won't cost us the five percent to do that?
It still costs the five percent.
Oh.
But the FAA share, normally you're saving your hundred fifty thousand dollars every year for it. There's just no way you can save two or three million dollars to pay for the FAA part. They're saying, don't worry about it, we've got money. This is important. We're going to bring the money you need to cover all the federal parts, and then you just bring your.
What do you estimate that our, Tracy's five percent share is going to be?
You want to, so if you look at the CIP here, under local funds, the local funds column, each year, there's a calculation or an estimate of what the local funds would be. And you can see for federal twenty-three, it's called out as thirty-three thousand four hundred. That's this year. In federal twenty-four, it's one-twenty-nine, eight-twenty-two. That seems like a lot of money, and it is. There are some things that we might be able to move around a little bit, but not a whole lot.
And that's for the reconstruction of the runway?
Um.
No.
No, those, those two for twenty-three and twenty-four are really more related. Some of it is related to the runway reconstruction, but most of it is related to your hanger construction, which Eric had budgeted for.
Right, but we've already got that.
Green is already part of this.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So then the remainder is actually quite a bit less. Then it's thirty thousand dollars in federal twenty-four, for instance. And about, I don't know if you really need to do this crack seal in federal twenty-three. You might not. I'd, I'd say that's an airport manager question. If he doesn't think it's needed, we just don't do it and save your four thousand dollars for federal twenty-three.
So is the issue with the county road that the power lines are just too close to the airplane taking off, is that the?
No, no, actually, it is just the road itself, which seems a little silly, but the way they calculate that is they assume that there's a big truck on the road right at the end of the runway. And so you have to have a clearance over that. So it's really just a truck on a road, not the power line.
Okay, if nobody drives on it.
Have there been any close calls? Have there been documents on that?
Oh, Shane would know. I don't know.
No. We've had wildlife issues, but not.
Right.
Not robo issues, but not saying it couldn't happen, but I think most of, most of what we have land, it doesn't take the entire runway to, to get it, and they know that, so they're not using the very first foot of it, you know, they're coming in.
But that's not how the FAA operates.
No, exactly.
How does this airport compare to like Slaton? I was by there the other day, and there was a fairly large plane in there. Is this quite a bit smaller than that, or are they about the same? Or you're not familiar with Slaton?
Well, Slaton is one of my airports too. So we just finished their ALP as well. I don't, I think they're fairly similar. They have their own difficulties, you know, talking about roads being in the way. That road that runs parallel to their runway is way too close. They have the exact same problem, except to the side, whereas you have it on the approach. And MINDOT, actually, MINDOT really cares about the approaches. In this case, it's MINDOT as much as FAA, having those approaches clear, so.
Are you good with all of this?
Yeah. We had another meeting on putting this together here.
All right.
So as we're getting close to budget setting, be able to figure out what we need to be anticipated.
And part of my job as your engineer is to work with you guys on this stuff. And if a hundred and twenty-nine thousand is not something you can handle in federal twenty-four, well, then my job is to go work with MINDOT and FAA and figure out what can we do to make it better. Sometimes.
Yeah, why don't we start that right now?
Well, sometimes it's more like, well, how can we tweak things, remove things? There's some, certain things have like a, a timeline or schedule that needs to be followed. Your runway reconstruction sadly is pretty much stretched out as far as we can make it go.
I think we've, we have approved what is in green, which is the lion's share of twenty-three and twenty-four.
I believe so.
And that's, that's what we did as well.
That's the hanger.
Yep.
That is all I had. I know it was a lot, but yeah.
Very expensive.
Well, it's not going anywhere.
So with that, I will go, go home and start working on the IFE, as you discussed, and then we'll put task orders together, and we'll be back as soon as we can to finalize that with you.
When you need us, holler.
Okay.
Well, we. What's our step on the cemetery? I mean, are we going to get some kind of request from St. Mary's, I think? Or, I mean, they reached out to you, but. They have a verbal request. I don't know. Eric and I went back and forth with Angela, and now it's basically down to how much is the land worth, and that's going to be a determination of how much St. Mary's wants.
Okay.
You know, because it's got to be fair market value of, of the land, is one of the FAA requirements, so.
Do we, I was reading through our charter, and do we have, I don't think we have to put that out for competitive.
No.
I mean, we can establish this as a pretty identifiable use, we can just sell it directly.
When you say fair market value, is that like fair market value, we paid for land when we did the ponds, or just what fair market value land is going for now?
Be today's value. And it's still, I believe we still have to have a public hearing on it. I think any land sale does require a public hearing. So you just have to do that regardless, but, yeah, I don't know.
Just part of the process. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
You're welcome.
Appreciate all your work. Think your life a little easier? It's further away from town though. Yeah, the ditch isn't much fun to maintain.
Okay, you're in the next one, Shane.
So go on to nine-B, lease purchase requests for your equipment. This is kind of public works, but a lot of airport too. Our airport mower has completely died on us, and there's no resurrecting it anymore, not without costing us twice of what the thing is worth. They've discontinued multiple parts for it. We do have, as you can see in the CIP, there's a mower in there, I think for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Can you wait?
So.
Tom will, Tom will come out with the pushboard and take care of it.
They don't allow goats because it's wildlife, so this is our, our best option. I kind of laid it out here. Basically, the mower, if we want to purchase it outright, is twenty-four-five. This is a one-year-old mower, because it has warranty on it. It's only got one hour on it.
Nice.
So they discontinued what we actually priced for the CIP. That's now thirty-two thousand, so, and who knows what it's going to be in twenty-twenty-six, So I guess my recommendation is to purchase it outright, but we do have the lease option, which is a matter if you want to pay that seven-point-one percent over five years. Ends up being about twenty-five-hundred bucks more over five years, but, you know, we're kind of stuck right now with that dying on us, so doing something.
What you had in this was twenty-four, so what did you say, the new ones?
Twenty-four-five is the purchase price, and that's the unit that they have now.
Okay.
But they will do a lease, which is fifty-two ninety-five, twenty-two a year for five years, and then two thousand dollars to do at the end of the lease for the buyout.
So that's, I did the math, that's almost four grand that.
It could be more than that.
Thirty-nine seventy-five is what we would save by purchase as opposed to, I would.
So this is a, this is like a lawn mower, only a bigger one?
It's a, it pulls behind the tractor. So we bought the tractor.
That way more.
Yeah, so in twenty-nineteen, we actually purchased the tractor with provisions to mow the airport this way. But MINDOT hasn't had the funding. You know, last time we bought it through MINDOT, this is actually budgeted through the FAA purchasing it, so it's a lesser, it's a better grant, but it's longer wait. But the last three years, they've had nothing for us to apply for, for grant money to replace this in the same program that we purchased the first one. We'll, we, there is some salvage value, not a lot. The hydraulics are still good on the machine. There's a few out there, but not many anymore. They're kind of few and far now. So I mean, there, we'll get a little bit off it, but we paid it, we paid twenty-five percent of it, so we got to pay the other seventy-five percent of whatever the value that we get out of it, whether, you know, if it's, if we get a thousand dollars out of it for salvage, we got to pay seven-fifty of it back to the MINDOT, back to their program. So basically what we paid for, they want it back and that percentage, which isn't going to be a lot of money, but it's something. Try to get what we can for it, but it's going to save us inefficiency. So probably end up doing is, instead of three full-time seasonals, we go to two full-time and one part-time, or just two full-time. Right now, we, it's hard just to get two applicants, you know, for that position, but it was a lot different than it was ten years ago, so. So basically, you know, this is going to save us in, in staff, and then, once we purchase it through FAA, the mower has to stay at the airport. Same with the grant that we bought our current mower on. You know, we, we have the mower, use it for whatever we want at the airport, but that's it. So purchasing it as a city, we can use it at cemetery, we can use it.
Oh, okay.
You know, for the bike trail, there's some long areas there. There's some stuff in Swift Lake we could use.
Sure.
You know, some of the wide-open areas, it would cut down a lot on time, which is why, so you can cut staff on the part-time seasonal.
I would move to go ahead and purchase at the twenty-four-five, the mower. We need a resolution. Move forward.
I'll second that. Sounds like a good plan.
And we'd have it like tomorrow?
We currently have it, we're demoing it right now.
Gotcha.
We'll have to get a resolution for this, but we can bring that to the next meeting, but I'll let.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see any reason not to.
But the resolution, so it's free, is, are you on it, like, to sign it? I don't know.
Yeah, we have to go through and actually physically approve it.
Yeah.
It's a formality at that point, but we have.
I think you'll get an approval unless something changes in the next two weeks.
And that's not, that's not going to be a problem, so.
All right.
But, yeah, it's kind of an old way to go, and then I can, I can let them know, so.
Have at it. That or buy a bunch of sheep.
Get the little forest dump one out there.
Right, so we will move on to new business.
So we got resolution twenty-twenty-three dash forty-seven, approving amendment to res, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-seven for sale of parkland. This is removing Greenwood Park as an option for the sale there. Everything else is the same as far as the previous resolution. Should we, I noticed on there too, should we change that from, it says four to six lots? There's no way we're going to get four to six lots on Sebastian if that's all that's left on there. Should we change that as long as we're changing the resolution, change it to two lots, or doesn't?
At Sebastian? Are you, you said at Sebastian, make it two lots?
It says where the city council believes that cities, you know, of.
It says where the city council believes that cities, you know, of sale of four to six lots on existing parkland.
Oh, I, okay.
But, and then later underneath one, authorize a city administrator or designate, take all necessary steps to create no more than six lots. I mean, as long as we're making changes, should we just change that to two lots?
I would like that.
There's only two potential lots at Sebastian.
Maybe we can get more lots if we add that other park, is it Warner Park?
And there's utility conflicts down there. There's quite a bit of utilities in that park.
Is there?
Yeah.
So Shane, one, I, I didn't see flags on how deep it goes into the property.
They're there.
You'd have, pardon?
They're there. You got to go between the bushes though.
Oh, I didn't do that. Oh, well, I was out there and wandering in the wilderness, but I could see on the front edge.
What, like, they're between the fence and, and the row of bushes south of the fence, afar from the fence.
Okay, so. Just, just to get my clarification, I could see the flags in the front and we'd have to, whoever built there, we'd probably have to take out those evergreens.
Yeah.
Take all the trees out.
And then there's two rows of bushes.
Yeah.
Both rows of bushes would have to go too?
Yeah, they're done. Those bushes are done.
But, but that's why I couldn't see how far or how deep it went, but it would involve both rows of bushes. Okay.
Probably this, the north this row of bushes, another ten feet past them, probably it was.
Okay.
Approximately.
All right.
So if you see that north row of bush, this estimated another ten feet.
And that was if we did, what, hundred, twenty?
Hundred and twenty.
By a hundred and twenty?
Okay, because if we wanted a hundred by a hundred, I mean, I know that doesn't meet our, but I mean, that's another discussion online. But we would, we could maybe stay a little even farther away from the fence line if necessary. I don't think you'd be building that far back.
No, it's required to have a twenty five percent lot depth for rear yard there anyway, so. I mean, they're going to still, which, still, you can put a break, a big house in those lots.
Oh, yeah, and a nice lookout or hundred potential.
And then that would be whoever bought it would have to take the trees out themselves.
Yeah, unless you have some kind of an agreement on the land purchase to do it prior.
Well, I, I, then is that's, I mean, I don't know how, that looks like a lot of trees and bushes to me. Sell them as is? Or where are we at with the bushes and trees?
We haven't even had an established price yet, have we?
No.
No, they have to be surveyed and everything, so. And your price is going to probably reflect the trees, whether they're removed or.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's, it's probably going to be more saleable with, you know, Jeff might have more input on that.
At least the bushes, I think, are removed. The pine trees are going to be in the front setback. I mean, they're not necessarily going to be in the way of, you're going to have to remove some to get a driveway, but not potentially clear them because your house can't be right on the curb and those are pretty close.
Somebody might want to keep, keep a bunch of those.
Yeah.
They're dying.
All right, well, let's make that change to two lots and since, like you said, since we're changing it.
I'll second. Or did you already make the motion and he's seconding? I'm not sure where we're at here.
Dave just made the motion.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
Well, Mayor, I, I guess I'm going to vote against this proposed resolution simply because. One of the reasons we asked this resolution in May was just to consider the possibility of lots in these two parts. And we were trying to accommodate one party that had indicated some interest in building in Greenwood Park. Now, I'm not saying I'm in favor of or against selling lots in Greenwood, but. If we pass this resolution eliminating Greenwood, we would be vetoing the chance that we would someday get a proposal on that particular lot and we wouldn't be able to consider the proposal on its own merits, so.
Well, I think we, I think all we're doing at this point in time is taking it off of the list. I don't think we could preclude a future council of reexamining. I don't think this is setting in place anything that's, I, I don't think there's a way of doing it. I know that Greenwood liked us to promise, across their heart, and promise that we would never, ever bring this subject up again, but we can't predict what a future council may or may not decide to do. And I don't think this resolution takes that completely off the table. It just says for right now, city staff, move forward with Sebastian and take Greenwood off of your list.
At least it puts into play two additional lots.
And that's, and it probably is going to be two additional lots for twenty twenty four. I mean, we're not going to get them probably surveyed and everything, ready to build this year with Minnesota seasonal building. I mean, it'd be great if we could, but I'm just saying, if we move forward, at least now we'd have something maybe by spring to. Get done.
Seth, my whole concern about how that resolution in May was written is that we are considering. But how can you put lots for sale, advertise them or promote them if we're not, if they're not for sale? Do you know what I mean? We're more than considering. To me, that was, are we going to sell or are we not? Because I don't know how you could say we're considering it and then somebody is interested and then we say, nah, I don't think so.
And as we were saying, we would consider a proposal. That's all.
Yeah, we're going to expend some money on this, so I mean, we need to say yes, let's do this because we're going to have to get them surveyed, have to move forward, maybe with some clearing or whatever. So I think what we're doing is we're giving this, you know, Shane and Jeff and staff permission to move forward.
So.
Get them ready for sale.
On the removal of bushes, did I hear one of you say that maybe what we could do is remove the bushes, not the trees?
Let's let people that buy the lot do whatever they want to do to it. Let's not have no.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want to do anything to those Sebastian lots or any lots until that such time as someone said, yeah, I'd like to build a house on that location at X price. And then, then we can talk about what we.
Sell as is lot.
And it's, it's still subject to public hearing too.
Right, right.
As is lot.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Teague?
Hi.
Abusie?
Yes.
Schirr?
No.
Dobson?
Yes.
Ray Day?
Hi.
May you comment?
Hi.
I, I kind of didn't catch that under mayor council communications, there were two things on there. I don't remember you asking if there was anybody else. I had a few items. Oh, well. I, I missed it. That, it was my big chance and I blew it?
Yeah.
Okay.
All over, all over. Sorry.
Usually you'll say, is there anybody else or whatever? What else would you like to say, my dear? Well, I've got a big list.
I'll choose one.
Oh, my goodness. And you're going to have to go.
Eight oh five, you get one.
I know. I had already talked to Shane to give him a heads up. I had some phone calls this last week and a person approached me in person asking, are we going to fill any potholes?
So I would ask what potholes? Because some potholes are ours, some are the county's, some are R and G's. The one on Morgan Street that someone planted flowers in is responsibility of RNG as part of their project. And they are right now on a hold because of the settlement testing. So that's, we're still waiting for a report on that. That's why it's not on the agenda tonight. So, you know, if there's.
Can we?
If it's on a county road, I guess.
Can we just put something in it just so someone doesn't blow a tire, dust a rim in it by not seeing the flowers? I mean, that.
Well, there's two cones there, so they're not driving in that area anyway.
Well, they're swerving around the cones and.
Yeah, but that whole intersection is low and there's actually a manhole that's poking up in the middle of it, which makes a big bump there too, but. So it's going to take quite a bit of dollars to fix that and then they're going to have to rip it up in two weeks, so.
So, so the work would resume soon?
Yeah, so as soon as, I'm, we're hoping, I know Kyle and I talked about this last week, you know, with A E T, we're hoping they can get a report done so we can get this settled at the next meeting and move on. That would be, then, so that particular corner would be a part of their.
Yep, okay.
Well, it took them how long to get out here to do them then?
Yeah, it's, it's their workload. It's a little instruction seeking, so.
All right.
Well, they knew about it already last fall, so we should have been on top of the list, I think. I don't know. The ball just keeps getting dropped.
Okay, so potholes, but if they're on city streets, are we going to attempt to do some or not?
Yes. Right now, we're, been struggling keeping up with grass and we're still falling behind a little bit on that. Some days, depending on if it rains or not, but once we get, we got one part-time start today. Got another one starting tomorrow, so I'm hoping.
That'll take over on the grass.
Then we can bring our full-time staff over and then we'll take, plan on nothing happening until after May. Anytime with potholes unless they're going to swallow a car because it just, we don't have the staff. I mean.
I mean, after June.
Well, for sure after May, but.
Well, we're, yeah, we're in almost mid-June.
But we're in June and it could happen in June, so.
Okay, all right. You're saying in a normal year, we're not going to get to it until, because they don't even have the hot mix usually.
Right.
End of May, right?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay.
You know, it's product availability and, you know, if it's really bad, you know, we'll fill it with something until we can get mixed, but. Their, Morgan Street is more of a bump and the other stuff is kind of just the first lift that's peeled off, so.
So if it's on a county road, that's up to the county?
Yep.
If it's a RG responsibility, that'll happen after the compaction tests come back in?
Yep.
In the future? And if it's our streets?
We're hoping early July on RNG stuff.
Okay.
Our streets, I do have, I have a contractor coming out to look at. We got a few on Roland Street. First East is kind of a lost cause, but we usually bring a load in and just try to do best we can there.
Okay.
That ship is sinking, but.
Yeah, well, I'm not meaning to drag this out, so we've got some homes in really bad condition.
Got some what?
Homes that are in very bad condition. They look unoccupied. I think you told me the one at, what was it, Hunter? No.
So.
The, the one that's on the corner. You said it just came up for, it has been relinquished due to taxes.
Like on Union and First East, yeah, that, that just coming over to the county now as forfeited property. There's quite a few others in town that are forfeited and a lot of them are not mowed. Right now, I'm working with the county and they're going to try to get their parks department to mow some of them to give us a little bit of.
Okay, because they really look, I mean, besides the condition of the properties, the lawn is at least eight to nine inches tall. It just, it looks really tough and for the neighbors, I feel bad for them.
The house over on the east side that had the fire and they completely leveled that, did they? Did we get a permit for that or do we know who did that? They did a nice job. I mean, they.
On East Morgan?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a permit for that. That's done.
Well, did the insurance company do that or do we know how much that cost?
Oh, really?
Okay. They did a nice job. I'd like to find out who did it.
I know who did it. We'll talk later.
Okay, then the testing you said is going, you're hoping within the next two weeks that we're going to have the testing done on the compaction for the streets that were in tough shape?
They haven't even tested it yet?
No, they haven't drilled. They did a utility meet last week on it, but they're going to try to drill this week.
Yeah, we thought they were going to be out last week, but I'm not sure what happened with the schedule or. I think they understand our frustration. Shane and I will talk to them this week, so.
So you're putting the screws to them. It's just, it'll happen when it happens.
Need to tighten it up a little bit.
Okay.
This, this already was last fall known. It should have been the first thing this spring.
Your, your other point though about the homes, I, I guess I would like to review this with Matt and with Shane now that Eric's gone, because it seemed like a lot of times it was, we can't do anything else. I'd like to see if they're, Matt can't come up with putting some teeth in what we can do with some of these projects out there that are just, I mean, we've gone as far, have we gone as far or is there another step that we can actually enforce the code in our community?
It's all going to come down to money though.
Yeah.
It's going to be court costs and it's going to be.
Yeah. District court and that can be a lot of money.
A maintenance thing now at this point.
Can we assess it and put something that just continues to grow as far as cost?
There's nobody left, especially if it's.
Let's say you put a thousand dollars a year on every, on all the bad lots. Who's ever going to buy the lot and the people that own it right now could care less and they're going to let it go to, back to the county and then the county's going to go, well, can you wipe this out? So we're never going to get any.
We did, we, we did two of them last year, I remember. One was the garage over here that's about ready to fall and one's out in Bride. What's the next step on those two?
Court.
Okay, so that's what the next, I mean, they're owned, are they absentee or are they?
The one is kind of, the other one, no.
Okay.
There's actually, the ones she's talking about are actually probably in the same boat too now.
Okay.
And there's a few more too on the list that she hasn't mentioned too that are.
Oh, yeah.
As I bike, I suppose I could start writing down addresses, but.
I already, a lot of these have already cited and, you know, they sign off on, they never do the work and it ends up forfeited and they, they have no teeth to go off.
And then that just takes time to get to that point.
The state of Minnesota and.
Well, at some point in time, we're going to have to either build in some costs to do it because you just can't.
Right, and that's what we used to do.
Yeah.
We used to just purchase and forfeit it.
If we did one a year, we'd be making some progress.
Yeah, because some of them look actually hazardous. Oh, and speaking of hazardous.
Not just look.
The fencing is down on the west side of the Old Licker Store.
Yeah.
And, and that doesn't, it's not a hazard anymore?
Well, there's going to be discussion on that building here in the very near future too.
Okay, then, then we'll save it for another time. I don't, I have just one more thing. I did talk to Tyler today because when I go through the, it's called the check register, you know, tells us all the money that was spent, all the checks issued. And I asked him, is it possible that we could add one more data item and that would be, I can see who the check was made out to, but I don't know what, what we got for that money that we spent. Kind of like you put in your ledger, what, what you did. And, and he did do, tried it out, gave me a sample page that he could add another column for that. And then he had talked with Diane. And I would have to get all of your blessing. It, it would save time because, as I start getting more in-depth on this stuff and I start bringing up, should this check, what did we get for this or who, what was the deal on that check? It would just save us time by being able to see.
Yep.
Just, just so it doesn't add additional time for the staff.
Well, it would, because you're adding one more data item in there.
Yeah, but you can memorize the reports and just run them. So I mean, it's not, it's a little bit of work upfront to recreate the report, but.
I think that'd be handy. I, I've asked, I used to ask Eric almost every council meeting about one or two things, you know, and there's twenty thousand, fifty thousand dollar line item and it's just.
Right, yeah, we all do.
Decorating company.
And it would just be nice if, if that's not on a bearable burden, I would appreciate it deeply, so. Everybody all okay with that? Do you need a motion or resolution, Diane? Okay, there was no complaints. Thank you for your time. I'm done.
I guess I'm not quite doing with that.
Since you've been talking about houses, when are we gonna do something with the home project?
Oh, thank you, that's another big mess.
Everybody, I've always heard, well, there's nothing you can do, well, there's gotta be something we can do, because it's just trash then.
Tell you that I got an email from him, just because I had to send my bill for formal contracting and he said, Pam, I'm gonna tell you, you're gonna be surprised on the changes that are gonna happen at that trailer park this year.
Who's this, he, the person that owns it?
Yeah, that owns it, yeah, but he never said what, what the big changes are gonna happen.
Jeff, Jeff looks less than, less than.
Shouldn't we really put this on a future council agenda?
That would be great.
And so we prepare for these things?
I think the one, too, that, the one that, I don't know if it's on your list or not, but the one that I think is even the most, it's probably not the worst condition, but it's the green one down by the Tracy Tornado Memorial. I mean, people stop there and they look kitty-corner across the street and they see that ice sore, I don't know. Do we know who has that or, it's changed hands like three times in the last five years, so.
Lots of critters were living in there at one time.
Can go back over accidentally.
Make a wide turn, comes out of the alley or something.
All right.
Okay, that's definitely one that should go though.
So.
Okay.
We're on.
We're on two resolutions.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-nine, approval of interim city administrator clerk. So, I'm assuming you want me to do that, means I'm sitting here and you didn't tell me to sit down.
You're in the hot seat now.
Yes, please.
Oh.
Do we need a, well, it says a resolute, uh.
Yep, there's some blanks to fill in on this. One, the whereas, um, that would be my name in there. And then I agree, uh, a thousand a month like I did in the past, um, but for you, good with you guys, um.
Now, the, I'm gonna bring up that, I was looking at the charter, so the way that our charter is put together is that this is an odd situation in that Eric was both clerk and city administrator.
It's all one and the same.
It's not in our charter, that's what's interesting, because it says that during the absence of or disability of city clerk, which was him, the deputy city clerk shall have all the powers.
Correct.
That would be Diane.
But in the other, is that the charter or the city code?
That's our city charter.
Okay, so I think in city code, there's another section that says administrator and clerk are one in the same position? They, and then they added in the charter that they'll have, they have a deputy city administrator and a deputy clerk.
Which are two different people.
Correct.
Which I have no problem with, with the resolution, I'm just mentioning, that's what our charter has, do we at some point in time need to discuss? That it seems as if those are two individuals.
And then the, the deputies are appointed by the administrators, so you'd have to appoint me and then.
And then you would appoint an assistant?
Basically, it's a recommendation to appoint and then the council approves it.
So you would appoint a deputy administrator and a deputy?
Deputy.
Interim deputy?
Yep.
Interim deputy clerk, okay.
And are we naming them tonight?
Um, we'll, we'll do that in another, the next council meeting, but. Okay.
So right now, we're approving Shane as our interim clerk slash administrator.
Right.
Okay? For an additional two thousand dollar compensation per month, and I would make that motion, a resolution, excuse me?
I'll second.
First and second, any further discussion?
Well, I'm just gonna say that I was a little bit hesitant about adding more to what Shane already um, does. Uh, he's got a full-time job already, but I, I was encouraged by, you know, Dave and Jerry, they felt that, that it was a workable solution, the last time we have, they had a, a similar situation, so um, I, I, I thank you, Shane, for being willing to take that on.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please. Randy?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Jones, or sorry, Schmidt?
Yes.
Avicii?
Yes.
Hi.
Your call. Hi.
All right, so next we have resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty, approve payoff number one for R and G for Center Street. I don't know if you have any questions on this, Kyle's here also tonight for any questions you may have on any of the phase three A projects. So the total, for this payment, uh, application number one is seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and seven cents. And that's all the work as of the end of May.
And you're in agreement that they have unsatisfactory to this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Hundred percent in agreement. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty for payoff one.
Any more discussion, I have something.
Well, we haven't even got to that yet, because nobody else has stepped up to.
I'll, I'll second.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Now we have a first and second, is there any further discussion?
Do you um, do you see any similarities with compaction and the clay and all the rain that we've had, the, the issue we've had on the roller coaster road, I mean, it makes me nervous, as deep as they dug and as fast as they filled it back in again.
Yep, they're, uh, they're definitely moving right along, uh, we have had um, additional compaction testing, that's all gone very well. We've seen um, a little bit better soils from what we were seeing over there and we've had a little bit um, higher moisture content in them, which is a good thing for the compaction part of it, so that's a good thing, too. Um, but, yeah, we've seen, we've seen a good effort and that continued good effort that they put forth in twenty twenty-two that those blocks were, were, um, you know, are doing pretty, are, are good right now and seeing that same, uh, you know, higher level of effort there and, and good results so far.
At your convenience, I would still like an answer on my driveway entrance off of Center Street.
I did talk a little bit with Shane on that one, so I think I know the one you're talking about and I do need to, I don't know if there's been any further discussion with Aaron on that.
You s, you said you had to check with the county, too?
Yeah, with that being the county street, I would, um, typically driveway connections are limited to a, to a single driveway, but it's not to say that since that was there previously or the curb part of it.
We were gonna check also, you had had film or something that you could refer to to make sure you're telling the truth?
No, I, I, I remember the one, because I remember looking at it with your garden there, that there was at least the, the cut in the curb, there was no driveway, but it was the lower curb part of it.
So I do remember the, the entrance part of it being there, so we'll, we'll check that with the county.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other discussion?
But this all being said, you're fairly confident on the quality of the work, right?
Yeah, you know, we feel like things have been going along pretty good so far.
But they dug all the way down, like right before that big rain filled in, they filled it all back, are they gonna have, I mean, they didn't put sewer in yet, did they up there or, that's all done, sewer's all done, water's all done?
Lower, yeah.
Like down in the basin, the lowest, the lowest part there, down by Johnny Johnson's?
Yeah, Emery.
That, yeah, that's on my, my block.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, the Emery intersection was all done, um, I think they connected into the south side of it, but that was all done with previous projects, so that won't even get dug up again, the part that still has some hard surface on it. It'll get dug up for the street in the storm sewer work, but not utility, they, they've already had sanitary sewer and, and water main across that, those intersection of Emery and at Hollitt. But when, when you say redone, some of the work that you're thinking that happened this year or?
Well, I, I thought they would be, I guess I did not realize that that had already been done, so they're, what they dug down to, they're done. Yeah, they dug twice.
Everything from Emery to the south, they're still working down between South Street and Morgan currently, working on water main today. Um, I would expect the water main and the sanitary sewer and all the services to be completed this week down by the ambulance garage and that would, and, and all of the sanitary sewer and water main work south of Emery, then the remaining utility work would be the very northmost block from North Street up to Trunk Highway fourteen.
Okay.
So they're, they've, you know, pending good weather and good work this week and next, or depending on if they move up there or move to doing more street work down by the, down by the ambulance garage, I guess. Um, they could be wrapping up utility work late next week if they continue on, on the utility work part of things.
So are we on pace for being done by Labor Day or?
No, August fifteenth.
Yeah, August, it's still, uh, it's still definitely a tight deadline, I think they still got a slower start just with the, the spring weather, they had winter stuck around a lot longer than everybody was hoping, so um, I know that they're still thinking that's gonna be a tight timeframe and, and pending maybe some asks and approvals from USDA, they might ask for a couple extra weeks at the tail end just because of that winter, I mean, we were getting snow in April still and, and into what we thought was some of the working season, so it's not completely unreasonable, but yeah, they are um, still, I'd say they're about, with this, this pay request from um, about a week and a half ago, that was roughly twenty-five percent of the work or the, the cost of the work being done, so um, just big picture cost-wise in the projects, so they're moving, moving along pretty good.
So I, I just remember that seemed to be a very hard deadline, that August fifteenth completion.
It is, yep.
And, and did that have to do with, for instance, we have a temporary bond in place for one year, right? We had a three-year and that didn't get done.
The USDA closed out, it is, yeah, yeah.
Like these projects had to be done by?
Yeah.
August fifteen.
I know, but my concern is the bond, the three-year temporary bond we had lapsed and we are in a one-year bond, how long does that go? Because I don't want us to have another ninety thousand dollar bill here for bonding.
Those bonds will be paid off by the new RD loan, well, it's a, it's still a bond, but RD-backed, um, bond.
Okay, I'm just asking, because I don't wanna see a repeat of what happened to us in twenty twenty-two, where we paid a ninety thousand dollar, whatever that was. Okay, I just, I'm asking that so that we're, if we'd have to renew a temporary bond or something, we'd take care of it.
It won't be a permanent bond here this fall.
Okay, but if there's a lapse, that's what I'm talking about, because that's what happened to us.
Another three-year bond, what was taken? So that would extend out through next year or something along those lines?
I heard that was a one-year bond.
Okay, I'm, yeah.
Either way, though, that was closed in, was it November, December? So, they're gonna close this out, uh, talk to USDA, it sounds like by, actually September, the way, the way the discussions went, October at the latest will be, it's all gonna be closed out into a permanent bond.
Okay, but Shane, do you understand what I'm trying to say? We had a temporary bond, a three-year.
Yep.
And that project was supposed to have been completed in that three-year period of time and this was nobody's fault that the work couldn't get done, we had weather issues, we had a whole bunch of stuff. And then they issued a one-year temporary bond.
In November.
That was in November when it was issued?
That's what he just said, yeah, in November.
About that time, yeah, I'd have to look back.
So one year is in November.
But in March of last year, twenty-two, is when that came to our attention, so that temporary bond didn't start in March?
I have to go back and look, I don't.
Please do, because I'm saying, we got a ninety thousand dollar, I don't know, extra cost that I don't wanna see again.
So if R and, so if they request a couple weeks in the back end, they have to agree, R and, I mean, rural development has to agree with them?
Everybody does, yeah, so it's stuff that, it isn't necessarily gonna be, if, if that were an issue in the case, it's certainly something we could take into consideration with any type of extension. We wouldn't wanna jeopardize any, any of the bonds or extra costs.
Our responsibility are having bonds in place. And that's my concern, is that came out in about March of twenty-two, that we owed an additional ninety thousand dollars.
That was a different part, I don't think it has.
Had to be refinance.
No, but she just doesn't wanna have that repeated again.
Oh, yeah, I guess I don't.
So I.
I think that's definitely something to keep in, we'll, we'll keep that in mind, I think Shane, right, is that's um.
To look at that stuff, please.
I think the point's been made.
Thank you.
So we can.
Okay, so are we at roll call here?
Mm-hmm.
What are we voting on again?
Hi.
Avicii?
This is the payment, right?
Yes.
For, yes, yes, okay, just wanna make sure I know what I'm voting on.
Dobson?
Yes.
Randy?
Hi.
Aaron Carter?
Hi.
I almost thought we were done.
Yeah, show you.
So we have resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-one, payoff number four. Um, this is the final payoff and final acceptance certificate for the pond decommissioning project.
Bravo, bravo.
Close one out.
How much is it?
Um, total left on this one is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one eighty-eight fifty. Um, there was a, there's also a change order as part of this, uh, which is a negative change order of fourteen thousand, five eighty-six ninety-five.
That's a savings to us?
A savings, yes.
Fourteen thousand, please repeat, I'm sorry.
Fourteen thousand, five eighty-six ninety-five.
Thank you.
Shane, did we get, has there been some seeding done on that?
Yep.
Site, okay.
Yep, all the seeding is done, erosion controls, there's some erosion control they redid and um, it's all been.
Should be going good.
Yeah, some of it's coming up, yep.
So it's new pheasant habitat?
Yeah, basically.
Okay, do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-one, payoff four for the final bond, final on the ponds.
I'll second that.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please. Randy?
Hi.
Dobson?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Avicii?
Yes.
Sweets?
Hi.
Your call.
Yes.
So now we have resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-two, to accept bid from M and R paving for three A sanitary sewer improvements. Kyle, I think I'll let you cover this one.
Yep, so that would be the, the sanitary sewer lining project that we've talked about being the final tail end of all of these projects and um, it, it includes a, a project area of Trunk Highway fourteen from um, Casey down to about Seventh Street and a couple of blocks there in between near Subway and near the grocery store. Uh, also includes a block over by fourteen and Craig Avenue and fourteen there and then also um, the sanitary sewer extending south of the railroad tracks from Center Street and Front Street through the neighborhoods down on Main and Randall and then out the side of the county road past the school. So um, I think I missed a couple copies, I just wanna make sure everybody in this, just spread these out, I think I've shorted a couple copies somewhere between our, our copier here, but um, just to, these, these highlight the project areas and we bid this.
Where are you talking?
We, we bid the work with a couple of alternates that we could award with the work, knowing that we want, don't wanna come up short in total cost on the project, uh, we expected, you know, with, if, if you'd award all the alternates, we'd be pretty close to or above the, the budget. So what we're recommending tonight with the budget remaining is to award the base bid and alternates two and three. So the one area that'd be excluded from the project would be the east part by the hospital. That's what we had shown there. Um, that was, that was one area, just dollar-wise, it makes sense to pull that out. And condition-wise, we weren't seeing as much eye and eye in it right now, there's obviously still issues with it, but, um, it, it makes sense to continue on with those, the, the base bid areas and the alternates that are adjoining to those, that two, numbers two and three.
Kyle, what was the reason why the bids came in higher than estimates?
Some of the, the sanitary sewer service work was high, um, higher than the estimate, just to do individual services, spot, spots in different people's yards. Where we know people have a newer PVC-type sanitary service, we're not replacing or lining anything there, but we are lining and repairing some of the very old ones out to the right of way where we know it's an old clay service, so those, some of those costs came in high. The general main line part of the pipe, the larger diameter main line sewer all came in pretty close to our estimates, but it was some of that, that smaller work that was just higher than our estimates. Uh, USDA and their, their engineers also have to review it and they, um, they've, they've approved of things too at the bids they are, because they just wanna make sure that things are still fair.
Materials that have increased in cost?
Um, you know, I, I don't know if there's a huge material change offhand, I know that that has gone up in recent years. Um, I think some of the smaller just spot restoration areas that they're doing, digging in a front yard and fixing up and re-sodding, that, that would just, was a higher price than what we were expecting from what we've seen on recent projects.
Rural Development has approved this and we have Rural Development grant dollars to pay for this.
We, we have, um, have had a couple meetings with Rural Development recently. We have a verbal approval and we're waiting on their, their signed final letter to approve this work. So tonight's, tonight's approval would still be contingent on final signature from USDA, but it's our understanding is that they approve of what, the plan that we have moving forward with both the work and the funding.
But the funding is stuff that we don't have to repay, is that right?
The funding, uh, what we're at right now, so USDA's part, they have both loan dollars and grant dollars, and you have to use up the loan first to get into the grant. Uh, we're, we're getting into that grant work with this, this Center Street project and with this project. And, and yes, everything kind of to round out the tail end would be grant dollars. And with the way that taking out the one alternate number one on this, it allows for a little bit of buffer space that if there was a change order or some other costs that come up during one of these last couple projects, there's still a bit, some room within that amount. And if those, that, that, um, dollar amount doesn't get used as a kind of a contingency, we'll say, that could go back to city, to the, some of the, the, um, uh, the city sewer and water funds to pay back some of the other expenses that have, the cities incurred over the last five years with this.
And just to clarify, we're dropping the hospital area.
Correct, yep.
You're up, George.
It is? I'll make a motion then to accept for, uh, twenty twenty-three dash fifty-two, accept the bid from MR paving. Is that what you wanted, Tom?
I'll say in your neighborhood is the one that they dropped.
Well, that's fine.
I'll second it.
First and second, any discussion? Roll call, please. Schmidt?
Yes.
Teeks?
Hi.
Landay?
Hi.
Dobson?
Yes.
Or Vissin?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Hi.
When do you expect that one that would drop will come back in?
What's up?
That area, alternate one that we dropped, will that ever come back in?
I think if the city could, decides to move forward beyond what, uh, the project list is here after things are closed out, that could certainly be first on the list, it's already planned for and, and have a good, you know, plans put together and designed.
We would just need luck.
Correct. Yep. But with that being part of, at least if, if there was some intention to go back to the USDA, which, which I know that they have, you know, in the long-term plan, there were, there were more projects on the east side of Center Street there that, that would certainly be high on the priority list to get, go back to. Yep. One other short thing, um, for potentially one of the next couple meetings, I just wanted to go back to Center Street. We talked a little bit about some of the potential, the schedule items that, that would need more consideration from USDA and city and some of those things um, that, that may or may not come back for further discussion. There is also, um, at the corner of Center and Morgan Street, there was the old, the northwest corner where there's the old service station. That was something that we, we knew that there is some potential contaminated materials there going into the project. We did run into those and they were more extensive than what we had planned for. The MPCA, um, they, they have a program, MPCA's Petrofund, that they require the cleanup of that if you're excavating it, but they also help refund a hundred percent of that cost. So, um, there were extra costs incurred during construction for that contaminated material, but it should be a hundred percent reimbursable.
Were there tanks still that, yet there or they were?
Um, their records show that there were tanks, but they were removed thirty-some years ago or forty years ago. But still, still running into some of the materials of petroleum with this and the sewer work. So there likely will be a change order to show that, that, um, the material amount and the dollar amount, so that we can submit that in for reimbursement too. Just to heads up that that'll probably come at one of the next meetings here.
How quick do they reimburse pretty?
They, they allow for us to submit for that reimbursement right away when we get the bill from the contractor. I didn't get an exact timing, but they made it sound like, hey, you can, you can submit monthly or however often you're getting bills, so it's not a wait till the end of the project and wait a year out kinda thing. So hopefully we can, uh, turn that around pretty quick.
And none of that gets assessed back to the owner of the.
Yeah, we can, we can, uh, with that being a separate, uh, owner of that specific property. That I don't know how the, their program works, if they do go at, or if that was part of the initial tank removal part of it, I, I don't know that often. Sure seems like there's some ownership that should, should happen there, but with the original owner, but.
Yeah, the owner that caused it's not there anymore, so.
Yeah.
Long, long gone.
Any other one, any other questions?
Keep them digging.
Digging, yeah. Moving forward. Get things, uh.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beans are still on three A stuff, um, I did get an answer to your question, Jan. The, the bond for twenty twenty-two A is due on April first of twenty twenty-five, so it's a three-year, so.
Okay, good, and that's the only temporary bond we have in place right now.
Right, the other one is RD-backed, um, I have to look and see what that one is, but, um, I guess I didn't look for that one yet, but, um, we'll look at that one too.
Thank you.
I'm sure Eric did when this happened, but we'll look at it just to make sure.
Thank you. I'll sleep better.
The last is resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-three for M and O agreement for the airport. Um, these are usually done every couple of years. Uh, this is for mowing, plowing, repair of runway lights, electric bills, any other utility bills out there. We get reimbursed seventy-five percent of those costs. We submit payments quarterly for this and, um, they submit back our payment up to, um. Let's see if they have them out here. So it's a two-year contract not to exceed forty-six thousand, nine eighty-six over the two years. Had it broken down by year, but whatever that is divided by two, but.
But you said quarterly payments.
Yeah, so we submit our expenses to them quarterly, but the agreement's over a two-year period, so.
So not to exceed forty-six, whatever.
Yep, over the two-year period.
We need to try to negotiate that up a little bit with the last snow.
They usually kinda go by whatever we've been using on average.
Okay.
It goes up and down, um, it's usually by a grand, not a lot, but.
Twenty-three, four ninety-three a year.
It's only been a couple times that it hasn't covered something, it's usually on the last quarter. M and O maintenance and operations.
I'd like to propose, um, that we pass, um, resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-three, that's an operating agreement for the airport.
I'll second.
First and second, anybody have any discussion on that? Roll call, please. Or Vissin?
Yes.
Teeks?
Hi.
Shane? Dobson?
Yes.
Landay?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Yes.
You're calling.
Hi.
So unless anybody else has anything tonight?
David.
I have had it, you know how to talk.
No, this is your deal. Move that urn.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Both? Cheers.